To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God. And the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Good morning. Call the meetings order. Appears we could have a forum. Take motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
Second.
Motion second in our discussion. All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carry. Rich Brown, good morning.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Just a couple of updates for you. I think the wind tower project out there, I think they're continuing to stabilize the gravel roads out there. I don't know, I haven't looked at all the roads yet. It looks like they're getting pretty well to the end of that. I don't know how many miles they have left, but I don't think there's too many, or maybe any additional layers they need to put on yet. I know they did some stabilization last week and were topping it. I don't know if they got all their top rock on yet or not, but also looks like they're starting to do some foundation digs, so, in some locations. Other than that, we got the guys out blading today. There's plenty of moisture out there, so I think everybody's out that can be outblading. They are doing the rock run right now. They started right away last week. We'll see how the rain goes and everything else the rest of this week. Guys are gonna be working the they're gonna do their eight hour days this week because of the holiday, but they're gonna work six to two thirty. They kinda like getting up early, so we're gonna run those hours instead. And then I think either today or tomorrow, we'll see that new motor grader come, get delivered. And then next week, they're gonna come do some walk around training on that grader, so. Kind of a heads up on where we're at this week, being a holiday week, obviously nobody will be around Friday. Any questions, comments?
I have, I have one, Rich. On Finch Avenue, Mike Gaskell's got some bends up there. It'd be just north of that road that goes to Happy Times.
Okay.
Be the next place on the right hand side. The drainage just crosses right there. He's got a driveway. I took some pictures of it yesterday. It's eroding as you turn in. You can see part of his driveway is actually caving in. So it looks like.
Whose driveway was that again?
It'd be Mike Gaskell's.
Okay.
He's got some steel, he's got a bunch of steel bends up there. It's always land right there too, also.
Okay.
The ditch is running west right there and it's washed right, you can see the, I've got a couple of pictures I can send that to.
Yeah.
Looks like some rip rap needs to be placed all the way to the end of the culvert, maybe dig out and puts them at the end of the culvert too, on the bank side. And then filled up with, keep it from eroding.
Alright.
Keep washing away.
Probably should put some fabric down. That'll keep the soil from.
Whatever needs to be done, but maybe take a look at it and do what's necessary there, okay?
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you.
Done.
I'll stick around.
Alright, thank you. Planes?
Yep. Meetings are coming up in the next month, but otherwise just.
A lot of spraying and reclassification and stuff.
Make a motion to preserve the range planes?
Second.
Motion is second to approve range planes in our discussion. Here in none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. Anything else for range? About regular planes? You guys look at them?
Did.
Questions on the planes?
Make a motion to approve the planes.
Motion to approve the planes, they're second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Sharing the mental health advocate cost twenty eighty agreement.
Go back up for a sec. I did a special during the week last week for secondary roads, sorry.
On the swap? Was that last week, right?
No.
No, that was. Yeah, I've done a couple of special ones lately.
Any motion to approve the special plane for secondary roads?
Second.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry.
The money for that advocate will end up coming from the region.
And county social services pays for handcuffs, we bill handcuffs. County social service for handcuffs.
Yep.
Yes, it's twenty eighty agreement. Clay County, Sioux County, Osceola County, Fall Offa County, Winnebago County, and Worth County. Our new mental health district region, I guess we should say. So take a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement.
Make a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement to the mental health.
Second.
Any other discussion? Here in none, all in favor eye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Since around the mental health thing, I did see that letter that Barry Anderson sent. You know, his letter?
Good response.
Very good response, yeah. How things work, so. Appreciate him doing that for us.
Yep. I had a meeting over there Tuesday.
Alright, this year twenty twenty-one budget appropriations.
This is from the budget that was approved. I just let them the way they are. I, I, how, how do you stop? Oh, one of them had money.
That will hit the brakes, but I, I mean, I guess we have to appropriate it and then just.
Well, and like I said, timing is like, like there's fees from your budget that, you know, we can't say you're only gonna get twenty-five percent of it in June or in July, so.
We push some of those around to hopefully coincide with intake.
Oh, I didn't take them. So anyway, that is why I ended up going with that, but I will be watching it adamantly, frequently.
Constantly.
Way too much, yeah.
And I mean, we've discussed it with everybody, hopefully they're still just not crazy, just what they absolutely need.
And taxes don't come in again till September, so hopefully people, I've been saying that for.
Oh, are they doing that now? I mean, better catch up as far as you know. Treasures office.
I have no idea. I, I don't know if they've gotten to the period where they're not, where they're penalizing them, because people were right, there were people that were right.
So I mean, that's the first.
I don't remember, I remember seeing that.
Yeah.
I need, also I need to get my license plates and stuff.
Get an appointment. Oh, so motion for that.
Yeah, so I'm taking a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dot oh six dot two nine, it's the twenty twenty-one budget appropriations.
So move.
No second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Here in none, about roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smithy?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Motion will carry.
So then, in conjunction with that, this is, these are the transfers to secondary roads and EMS for the next year.
Do both same time or?
Yeah, it's all in that resolution. Cause then when when I get them approved ahead of time, then we can just get them through when we need to get them through.
This is resolution twenty twenty dot oh six dot two nine dot oh one for inter-fund operating transfers for secondary roads and EMS.
Make a motion to approve the budgetary transfer, transfers.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion of second to approve. Any discussion? Here in none, we'll go with roll call. Abrams?
Aye.
Smithy?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Motion will pass.
Then for this year, before it's over, I, there was a transfer that Jim had requested when we did the budget amendment, and that was to take eighteen thousand forty-eight dollars from his conservation reserve account to fund one, and that was for the purchase of a pickup, if I remember right. Looked like a good emotional moment.
That would be the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Yeah.
So, so move.
I'll second it.
There's a motion of second to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget transfer for conservation. Any other discussion? I'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Smithy?
Alright.
Stone?
Aye.
Motion will pass.
Then, the last one I have is everybody's salary increases, but.
This is all budgeted too, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Take a motion to approve the this year twenty twenty-one salary resolution.
Second.
Motion and secondary discussion. Here in none, I'll go roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smithy?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Motion will pass. Alright. When we're back, go. Hi, Melissa.
Hi. Worth County should be receiving their check from the port authority. They finally got reimbursement from the state. Oh, Jack, can you, you second?
Well, she would've come here, tapped me, and then.
Yeah, that's in a different fund, yeah.
But it's still money coming in both of them, so. And that's sixty-some thousand, I think, right?
I don't have a pool. I came in after that.
Yeah. I think it was sixty-some thousand. Should be getting back when that pipeline study. Which is good. Cool.
Eleven thirty today?
Today?
Is this today?
It was tomorrow. I can't remember. Is it today or tomorrow?
I have it on my calendar. I thought I thought it was.
I think we left it up to you. Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We either do it after our meeting or after one of by goes meeting.
And then the one in July, I was gonna, you guys can do it Monday.
Yeah, because, yeah.
That was in July.
Yeah.
We have one today, isn't it?
Yeah. I saw the email, I just.
Okay, guys.
Yeah. And things in my head, so.
I know.
No, that's fine. I actually have to go that way anyway, so.
Did you have a rate, there's thoughts on the eight dollars for the meals or not?
No, that, um, and.
Nothing?
No.
Okay.
But I'm gonna pick it up and probably decide to pay for it convenient.
No questions.
We're gonna pay for it. I'll pay for it after the meeting.
We'll get you go.
Yep. Is it? Eleven thirty, right? Yeah. Sounds good. We're talking Jason and Jeff here in a little bit, right? About a lot sales?
No reports. I have two. One for conservation and one for public health, if I remember right.
New employee transformation.
Both, yeah.
Alright, that's right. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the seller recommendations.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to seller recommendations for the Upton in the full form amendment. Any discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Can't see anyone.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Rich if you got those pictures?
Yeah, that's fine.
Rich, did you get, I said send me those pictures. Did you get them? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking at them now.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is the manure management that I sent to you guys.
Acknowledge the manure management plan for Vengeurs.
I'll second that motion.
Jeff, there's a motion to second to acknowledge the manure management plan for Vengeur Farm. Any discussion? Here in none, all favor eye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Department ads. Anybody out there wanna talk? Got any grief? Any issues? Dan? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, thank you. Mark? Good? Jeff? He does no. Bill?
Bill.
Oh, you were looking right at him.
I always forget about that. Um, I'm a man of the rooms, I have all kinds of. So, on the drone front, Mark and I were called out yesterday for a manhunt search over Winnebago County. And the Matrice, the bigger one, that's got the floor on it, it's two years old now, and we're starting to see some battery issues. I know, it seems like it's only two years old. But I think Mark, if, if he can chime in if he wants to, but I think we can actually probably sell that thing to another county that's looking to jump into that market. And then probably upgrade if we want to. So we're, we're just kinda looking at pricing right now and seeing what that does. The, the, the frame itself is not the expensive part of the cameras. So we've got the cameras, I mean, you know, that, that third camera was about fifteen grand when we bought it. And that's still a very viable piece of equipment. So we're just maybe looking at upgrading the platform. Cause I've known the, the new Matrices, the three hundreds have much better battery technology from the one we've got right now, so.
Can we buy, can we get into upgraded batteries or?
Not, I mean, we're using them at latest and greatest, and the way we're using that thing, we're starting to bulge out on our batteries, so they're just function as well. And trying to get new batteries on that thing is just, it's tired. Yeah, I, I bought a new set off Amazon and they're already, we, we had them on our first flight this, this weekend and they just didn't perform well, so. It's, it's a little bit of a struggle trying to keep that thing in the air and can't keep them batteries out.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, anything from you on that, Mark, or?
Yeah, I just, I sent you an email on that. They had a little information on that three hundred series. And, so go ahead and look at that. It kinda, it's a whole package deal. They, you know, they sell those batteries with the rapid charging system, so they're made to rapid charge. It's got a, you know, a, looks like a better payload system, better it's made kinda for this stuff we do with this, you know, the repeated flight times, you can hot swap the batteries without having to power down the drone all the way and stuff, so. It looks like it's probably, would be more suited for what we use. We just gotta find prices on it and stuff like that, so. I'm working on doing them right now. It seems like every time, every month, there's firmware updates on these things, so. That's, that's probably, no matter what model you get, you're gonna have those. Those batteries charged up overnight and they seem to be okay now, but so I don't know if it was a heat slash humidity issue yesterday or what.
I wasn't working good yesterday, that's ridiculous.
We charge for that drone, when we take it out?
Mutually. So it's no different than the dog. It's no different than, you know, drone testing or anything like that, so that's.
So and what comes back to work?
Well, we do have where we reach out for like drug testing or additional K nine, or when we did that K nine order, you know, it's just kinda like to celebrate, we do some mutual aid with that stuff, so.
It's one of those things, it's just how it works. I mean, it is a piece of equipment we use quite regularly. I mean, unfortunately, we've used it quite regularly.
We have, and I mean, you know, we use it for other things, you know, like ultra-grain districts and things like that. I talked to Rich about doing some stuff with it too, so. I think it's something, the, the technology, we're just going to advance and utilize it more often, so.
Unfortunately, technology keeps advancing faster and longer.
Little bit, yeah.
Costs, this way, and it doesn't always get to be more expensive, it just is, you gotta upgrade it, upgrade it, upgrade.
Same, same thing here in the courthouse and everything else, so. You know, if the money's not good on this thing, we're obviously not gonna do it, but I think that's something. It was a little frustrating yesterday trying to work out with this guy, and especially with the heat, humidity, and just, you know, running it through batteries by crazy. It, it should be nice since we made that investment to have something that, you know, it, it worked fine for, you know, first two years and now it's starting to show some.
So, gonna work and try them?
Uh, did not, no, but they had the, they got the car, the guy ran from the car and they, they, they.
Well, they do secujo's, right?
They had two or three dogs out yesterday, but the dogs were, you know, it was hot, so it was, it was really tough. We got out there and then the rain opened up, poured for ten, fifteen minutes, and then, you know, as soon as I got up in the air, the tree line was, just became a fog. Just, just had so much humidity. It was kinda tough trying to pick things up.
Okay.
They were very appreciative.
I bet. I saw them a little once ago.
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Anick? You're, yeah. Recorder said shouldn't be up there, so. Guess we'll leave it at that.
I guess one thing, we did coordinate, so hopefully, they're gonna book on the assessor's office the week of July thirteen.
Okay.
Oh. Make the repairs in there?
Hopefully.
Okay, good. Leave iPhones in, bud?
Yeah.
Good.
So, I'm a little jonesed to hear them. That's the point, I hope, after we're done with the meeting.
And hopefully, they just get it, best case scenario, they'd get it done in the three days if they're, the rest of them are on training, otherwise they'll have to figure something else out.
Make it work. It'll be done.
Yeah. Chad? Um.
My best, I don't know, cause pre-grads, pre-grads definitely.
I think we're just gonna slide it all over.
Okay, I guess we'll move up to supervisors' reports for now. I had a meeting with the Northwest Care over there and this, members' board. Yeah, I did this, yeah.
Okay.
On Tuesday, and that one's good, we got we're accepted, so all it is, July one, we move from twenty, social service to Northwest Care.
Okay.
And we met with a new, her name is Anna Miller, I have her phone number, she wants to be the contact. Worth, Winnebago and for Sioux, and she actually said that once her daughter graduates, I think a year from now, she hopefully will move over in this area. That was her plan.
Good.
She'd like to be over in this area and not have to drive.
Either in Worth County, don't let her stop, don't let her move.
Just hold on here.
Dislike it.
Yeah.
Then I had, Wednesday, we had our final meeting down at the fairground on Mason City with county social services. Now, while we accepted Bob Rottner Nation, we hired the intern, Karen, who's a executive officer or whatever, financial.
She was kind of a sidekick right here.
Yeah, sidekick right here, so. We, we got applications out for new CEO. I'm sure I see the handwriting on the wall, it's already been tweaked and selected and done, but that's the way that board works, and the executive board over there works.
Doesn't really matter.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter anymore, we're out of it, so. I, I don't know, then I had, then on, that was in the morning, Wednesday morning, then Wednesday, one o'clock, I had an executive board meeting with ISA. Zoom meeting. And we're asking the governor to veto some of that, line item veto some of that twenty-six eighty-three? Bill. Because someone's going against home rule on the Humboldt County wants to stay, but, and maybe Wright County, we don't know, but they're, they're trusting because of the twenty-eighty-eight thing that says they have to illegal motors by fifteenth November, so you can leave. There's gonna be some squabbling going on there with some other counties, so. They don't want DHS to have all the power that they're supposed to have, but now they, before they didn't have, now they got it. They want, not to have it because we need home rule.
Okay.
So that one went out.
Good.
Did, did they end up approving how the cancellation was gonna happen on the money that came back?
Basically, it was like per capita and everything else on the.
Yeah, why, why did it include the?
Cash out?
Yeah, that makes sense.
That didn't make sense to me either.
Everybody would be different, I think, and ours isn't that much.
Well, I figured ours isn't that much.
So I guess it's not that big of a deal.
No, it's not that big of a deal. He's, he's already spent out of town anyway, so we have I've got a font ten, I got a couple trips over to the prim guard, and they're to take out a font ten. These are the, for the year old, turning this week.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that's like now.
You don't get it done, you don't get it.
Eh?
That's it, one week.
Our workforce development again this week, mid-week, we just had our local, or every two week call, and we continue to work on our agreement. Get that done so we can get presented to our county attorneys and stuff, hopefully we get some of the verbiage right. One of the things we one of the things that we kinda agreed on changing was, is, and this should never be any issues, if something went wrong, probably would, you know, have to put money in to help, I'll say, there was a misappropriation of funds or something like that, which insurance should cover most, but we will be insured, but if not, it would be on a per capita basis instead of an equal, equal basis, which is twenty different sized counties, that's the best way to do it, so. And then also on Friday, I had another call in with Iowa Workforce Development, which is a statewide call in, and they just get on there and talk about different things and kinda try to talk about what one, different regions are doing to get this up and going, so, I'm listening on that for a little while. Also at Central Iowa, do you have a little attention? Did you get an email from Tony with the audit report?
Yeah.
We have to get that on the agenda and approve it next weekend, so, so it gets to be accepted. That's all I have.
I had, for Iowa Regional Housing Authority, phone conference again Tuesday. Kind of business as usual, they're having problems filling up some empty, empty apartments, basically, like that's the most I've seen for that, but I have like twelve empty ones. And they're trying to, with all the COVID stuff going on, they were actually trying to reach, go out to like local communities, the churches, whoever, if their people are coming in needing help with housing or anything like that, that to go to regional housing authority and try to get that, but they're just, that's just real odd that they're, they're not getting any interest.
The people's not there?
I, I don't know, it's just kinda weird. They're, they're trying to do what they can to get these places filled up, but so, kinda different the others, like I said, they're trying to put it out more and let's see if there's people that are needed, just don't know about it.
Yeah.
And then they're working through some of the COVID stuff. Changes that the federal government's making with how certain things are done, with their HUD housing and their, their that whole process is kind of a way above my pay grade, but. Well, Justin does a good job keeping up on it, and it's, I mean, if there's, if there's two dollars we found out there, he's, he's getting it, so he's doing a real good job out of it, but. Other than that, that's all I have this week. Recent week. Anything else you can put on the agenda?
It's a new year, actually.
New year. Is Jeff on there? Is he coming in here or?
I thought he was coming in.
Is he coming in? Okay.
I got a couple. I got two three one nine numbers.
Yeah, one of them's Chris, I'm sure, and then I don't know who the three two four is, but. Well, just hang out, I guess, and wait for Jeff. Nine fifteen?
Well, I'm up there first when you're waiting for him.
Yeah, if you have any real update, yeah, that's fine.
Everything we did last week, all the underground work we've done, except for the subdrain. They're in the middle of the road, they're waiting to get the subdrain shaped before the subdrain goes in. They rained out Friday, it's been blacked, they had a good day Saturday. They rained out Friday, it's seven black days, they had a good day Saturday, and they're, let's say, ninety percent done, it's seven black days. Their focus was gonna be today, uh, getting that road prep, they wanna get the subdrain in this week and want to get the rock down because the paper is gonna be in Mason City, they'd like to know it right up and it's only been a couple weeks, you know, two, five, just waiting, might have.
Seventy pens out there, it's.
Three quarters, don't they?
Three quarters, okay, have to call it and engage, you know?
Yeah.
We're pretty sideways.
But it's progressing very well, I think, um. I did put together a change order for, for the changes that were on the void gaming building there, two items on there, fire relocating the pole and electrical equipment and camera, total amount for the change orders, five thousand dollars, salary for the hydrant extension and four thousand on the left pole and camera items, so.
That'll come through later.
I've got the change order, I don't know on, on the agenda, if it's approved or not.
It just won't be enough to.
That's the second change?
Yeah, the change order number two, yep. Another item off there is we did do some more digging last week on that drain tile that I mentioned at one time. Confirmed it did not leave the site, it did not craft, finally one of five. The clay line has been cut by a utility event, so we abandoned it.
Okay.
Blugged it up outside the new road, abandoned it. But in road ditch, we're in the road ahead, dig it up and put twenty feet of six inch in to get out from underneath the new road.
Sure.
Headed towards that lift station area, that low area out there, because that's deeper than the rest of our system, so if someday it's wet in that area, there's not wet there, so we're gonna have to take that thing. Nice one coming out, but Rich and I went through it.
Well, I want to thank you for the excellent engineering services out there, you done, it looks, I think it's very, very, very good.
That's right, we get to like, call contact, cause you know, they may get it done.
I know, but I mean, you, you, you did the design, but your company did the design, which I very appreciate the quality.
Well, it, it looks very good.
I do too, it looks like something.
Yes, it looks like something, that we can tell. Well, after that first, that day we met up there, first day, and I started walking around out there, and I, you know, I'd been by it a million times, but just walked through the place and say, just, bad, yeah, it wasn't nice, they just, they're volunteer trees, there's just dirt piles and weeds everywhere, it's like
parts of old foundation from old acreage that was there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's nice to see them all cleaned up, but brought down to a level, and it's, and coming up from the south, boy, you can really see. Man, you can, yeah, you see everything a long way, as soon as you come around that curve by Bob's place there.
Well, I haven't come that way yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know what it looked like before.
Yeah, come up from the south. Yeah, it's just huge.
Farthest north drive across the state, that, uh, the lights there, is that coming out? Is it called within there, I see the ball being there?
The one that goes to the lift station?
It must be, yeah.
Yes, once we get the new road and we're gonna start that lift station off the new road.
Okay.
So, we'll dig that over down, we'll save that driveway out, the, the one that goes to highway one oh five, if they're gonna use the power track.
Yep.
That one comes out.
Come to.
The D F P on that one.
Nothing else we have to cut.
The other one, on one oh five, it's the, the casino.
Did you hear the use?
You used, you go back and forth, yeah, that one's coming out.
Okay, I figured, but it's out there.
The only other item that we talked about a little bit was street lighting.
Yep.
We wanted to look at adding something out there for light. I wouldn't recommend going overkill by any means, because as it develops, the buildings are gonna spill light out, so we should be putting something in. Probably on the intersection, come off of Wheeler Wood, I think.
You got one up in the middle or two in the middle somewhere?
Yeah, we look at it in the intersections and then one on each curve, so, and, yeah, get like the ends and where the, where the road bolts, yeah, turn. Because i- if it's something that's gonna be added, we should get a plan put together and have it get trunched in at the same time as the rest of the electrical.
Yep.
And the guys out there may end up trenching for Hartland even. Yeah, they worked that out, editor, they're talking, but they're gonna end up going to the trenches for Hartland. We're hopefully gonna get some of the street runs done before the subdrain goes in, so you don't have to worry about trying to dig around that, like the electric, if you're involved in top of the subdrain. Um, yeah, and Hartland wasn't too crazy about putting lights up and maintaining them either. No, they weren't gonna do it.
You know, a lot, you know, community like Alliant would be in here, whatever, and Alliant just takes care of all the lights, they charge you so much a month.
Yeah, there's no meter.
Yeah, they just charge you fifteen, seventeen dollars a month, whatever it is, per street light and.
Alliant, Hartland doesn't do that.
They don't do that, so if we.
Give them a new service.
Yeah, it would be, it would be on us.
Yes.
I don't know, could we? Would we want to be feasible to come off that lift, lift station service?
Possibly.
Or start right there, I mean, we're fairly close.
When you don't have another.
When we don't have another meter fee, you know, otherwise that's about fifty bucks a month, like, I haven't given you a fee, you know, just the bare minimum. Um, and then that would just get included in the, uh, uh, wastewater bill for that lift station. Which those lights will, I mean, would cost a lot of lights, but.
Then it's what kind of lights do you want. About the different options.
Simple and, oh, we need, wasn't?
That's, yeah.
Direct berry, it makes it by the last one, but a direct berry even. That's what Alliant did to do it, so.
Right. Yeah, so we're, we're eliminating all the poles out there, as far as wood poles, that's all gonna be underground, so it won't be anything coming, setting one south off one oh five.
There's nothing better than wood poles, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me put some cost together, get you.
Yeah, I guess a couple of options, I guess, let's go with four, like I say, and, and come off of Wheeler Wood and then on the curves and there and like I say, and then by the time you, if you do throw a building up in there and no parking lot lights, no building lights, and it's gonna be we'll have enough light until that point, I guess, with those four.
Right. So, make it chill, it'll work with the sales, it's invisible. Then is Jeff supposed to be here?
Nine fifteen.
Okay.
Nine fifteen.
Surprised the dirt didn't wash it all this time in the rain, but they're doing real well.
Pretty good.
Time before.
Well, the clay washed quite a bit every time, I'm saying, yeah, but just blackers, didn't even follow the cat tracks down, it looks like through those states.
Must be a little heavier dirt maybe?
Yeah. So, that, hopefully when we seed it, it'll take real well then.
And they actually were able to get fifty thousand yards of black dirt, but it didn't, you know.
Oh, they did.
And we, we were probably in DC and sand and clay, like, go down and eat, and they come back, and they're buried, and they, they did a good job, they saved it all.
Definitely.
Not the fast tops, though, but.
Yeah, this has got something to it, that'll.
So, they, we had them put six inches within the, the right away, and then, I think it was about four inches on the right.
At least there's, at least there's something on there.
Yeah.
I know where. You take all the, the, uh, sludge from the wastewater plant.
Like recycling a little bit.
Yeah. That one gets dumped right next to it, anyway, you send it to the wastewater plant, and that, I get it all real close, straight from close.
Usually, I think, Randy, who's under the.
See, I put so much on for, you already gotta move.
Right, who knows?
It's all the, yeah, all new.
Yeah, you can get a bunch of compost or something. You don't know anybody, though.
Yeah, in a perfect world, they get paved in July, August would be the private utilities, September.
Awesome.
Better than I would have expected, honestly.
We're lucky, the weather's actually cooperated pretty well.
All the pipe guys, they're all happy to get out by July fourth, because they're gonna head to Clear Lake, right?
Even if we could have got the deed signed earlier, like two weeks ahead of time, we could have, a lot of that is too, because we had three weeks of good weather there also.
Yeah, we missed that one, but, I'm not implying we're right.
No.
A lot of dirt got moved, so.
Quickly.
They're all gonna really get the water to it, movement.
Is it Martha Clear Lake where they're doing a big project on, where the old cement thing way there?
Andrews County, is that where it's going or where?
Where what?
A big project in Clear Lake.
Yeah.
And so, that.
They're breaking down at nine o'clock.
Oh, really? Jeff is just supposed to.
Damn, oh, Jeff Rosenwood? His motel stuff.
There you go, there was an option, and it's gold, so.
It may, just not right now. I see, uh, see they're up there this weekend, Saturday is over there, and they're tearing down a little overhead trolley crane there, that's where the hotel's at. Oh, yeah, right there. Wonder whose was that, why did they? Todd Hall, yeah. Oh, I was, get that, so you had to come take it all down there.
It's raining? Yeah, but when you're walking, you. The time to have an umbrella is before it starts.
It's all, it's all worth it. All right, well, our lot sales. What's our procedure plan?
The, the process is, we, we have to have a public hearing. After the public hearing, we're looking for comments from the public, they need to know what we're selling, how much we're looking at selling it for, and listen to any concerns they have, we need to publish notice for that. But as part of the notice, we need to tell them what we're selling, how we're gonna sell it, and what we're looking at selling it for. Once that's done, the next step is to get the individual lots sold, and then we'll need to come back, do another hearing, do an ordinance or a resolution to approve the sale of the lots. And then we're done, but it's, it's not like selling a piece of property by a private person. There's extra steps in the process. It is a problem, if we do a publication that says, okay, we're gonna sell these lots for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and then we wanna actually sell it for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, because they wanna negotiate. But we either need a minimum, minimum price, we need a firm price. If we're gonna be using a realtor, uh, we may wanna be adding on five percent or put in the agreement that, that any realtor's percentage is gonna come out of the, uh, out of the buyers. But we have to do something to, to, again, give, give notice to what we're, what we're planning on doing, so at, at this point, I need to know more specifics so that we can go ahead and get the resolution for the public hearing prepared.
Yeah, so we, basically, we need to set numbers on, are we gonna, that's something, I guess, we need to figure out, if we're gonna set based, kind of like on location of these lots, or are we just gonna set a number and first come, first served at this number, square foot, you know what I mean, I don't, what do you, I mean, you've seen what they did down in Clear Lake.
Location, baby.
His location, but price, that's how they figure their price base, basically, just, if you got the prime location on a corner lot or. You know, so I think, basically, on the corner, coming down around Wheeler Wood and up above on the, along the interstate. Yeah. So.
So, when will you be able to have all that information for Jeff, for how we can?
I, I guess, we have to figure where we're at. When this is all done, what do you, what our square foot number is that we have, that we have into this, you know?
Right now, you're, for the approval of that, that change order, we doubled the scope of the project.
Right.
We were at two dollars and forty-two cents a square foot, so we included a contingency here, and that was construction, engineering, bond council, niya thought through that, that urban renewal areas, the utility, and the contingency of a hundred and ten dollars, we're not gonna even do that contingency, we're gonna come in under budget after construction, that's what people do, they're gonna come down. But here, some of them may need to go above that, and some of them may need to be below that, just based on location.
Location, I can't tell you that, all right, I'm not the. Well, and that one, you know, that goofy lot down on the south portion, it's a big triangle piece. I mean, it's just an, it's the biggest lot there, but it's the hardest shaped lot to, yeah, put something in there.
That value for that lot.
Right, versus going up on the corner of the interstate and, and Wheeler Wood, or one oh five, I mean. Yeah.
How are we gonna go about selling it as far as every day?
Yeah, that's what we also.
If you have somebody involved there, they may be.
So, Jeff, do we have to? What's the best, what's the best way to get a, we've got multiple realtors within the county, that I, I'm assuming we would like to stick with that. Do we put out an RFP or do we offer to all of them? I mean, how do we, how can we do that? If the percentages are all the same, then leave it up to tho- those realtors?
Uh, I, I would su- suggest, well, let's, let's back off, it, it certainly would be helpful to have someone that we're working with that can give us the information that, that Jason is mentioning as far as what, what's, you know, close to a fair market value for the property. Uh, I, you know, that's not my area of expertise, and I don't know that anyone in the room has, has that knowledge, so we almost need to bring, bringing in a realtor, and you can certainly be someone that, that can list it. Um, generally, they split the commission if there's another realtor on the, on the other side, so you're not, you're not excluding it, uh, I, I know that Julie had been involved the first time, uh, I don't, after the way that went, I don't know if she's.
She has sent a, uh,
She's in our.
An email saying that she would like to be considered.
Okay, and that's the question I've got, is then can we just on our own hire somebody, or do we have to go for like an RFP? I mean, there's, I hate to hire Julie and then somebody else within the county or within town, go and say, well, I didn't get a chance, why didn't I get a chance, you know what I mean, is can we, what's the best way to go about that?
Well, I, I think for, for the dollars you're, you're talking about, I don't think there's any requirement to do a bid.
Okay.
Um, you know, you know, I, I'm not overly familiar with the realtors outside of Northwood, I mean, there's Julie and then there's, uh, Chris Gordon. I'm, there's some others that do business in the county, but they aren't located in the county. Uh, you know, we can certainly, you know, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with Manley and, and the rest of the county, I don't know if they have any realtors that are bases.
There's, there's some that live, live in the county, but they're opposite of Mason City.
And I don't know, you, you know, if you're, you, you want me to contact all the realtors in the area or, or and see, see what they're willing to do, or would it either point out for a competitive bid, and whoever wants to come in lowest?
Right.
Uh, we give it to them, or, or just have a, a non-exclusive agreement that, you know, whoever, whoever brings the business, the problem with the non-exclusive agreements is then no one has the incentive to be doing newspapers and online things that cost money. Is, you know, if you're not gonna get that sale, you aren't gonna spend the money on it.
Right. Right. Well, I mean, like I said, I don't know who else has just the actual office within the county. I'd say there's some that live here, but their offices are outside of the county.
I think it'd be nice to just keep it in the, at least it's within the county.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, give our locals a chance.
Give locals a chance.
And most likely, they're gonna do a, it's gonna be a public listing or whatever, so it's gonna be shared if some other realtor sells a lot. We all know that, but that whoever we have listed, they're gonna be the ones taking the bite on the, uh, the advertising. You know, putting signs up out there, you know, advertising it out, so.
Well, it's like the email I, I got, I supported too from Julie, that she was sent to twenty-one, they had a Mason wider, you know, bigger region that they could advertise a lot better, so. And I don't, I don't know Chris's, uh, action as far as real estate, does it what, kind of true with her?
She's, she's associated with Exit Realty, and I think their office, main office is in Mason City.
Okay.
And she's got a satellite office here in, here in town.
I see no problem why they, those two could work together, the markets would think.
Let me, let me, uh, reach out to both of them, and, and, you know, ultimately, they're gonna need to do an agreement.
Those things, sales or whatever.
You know, with the board.
Okay.
But, but, so I, you know, I, I guess, my concern, if I have a concern is for you guys to understand what the process is, we're looking at, and, and know that it's not something that that is gonna just happen and.
Right, yeah. One, two. Well, it's, we just gotta get our numbers set. We need to get our numbers set and what we're gonna sell them for, get that due, get the process started.
But then we still need to get the, the realtors in there to help combine all this.
Yeah, and I, I'll reach out to the realtors after that.
Okay, okay.
So.
Let me keep that to Jason, and we're all on the same page, keep, keep the pages going.
Yeah, I know, you have the square foot numbers for Clear Lake? And what they're advertising, are they, are they using a realtor?
Yeah.
They are? Did they just show them?
No, they're using, um, Galloway, Demond, or Anthony, that does. Yeah, with more exposure.
Yeah.
That, this is what they focus on.
Like Hubble, or, uh, there's another guy down there. L W, any, any L W?
Yeah, there, sure.
That's way up north. Well, and I guess maybe we can ask the realtors too, if they've got any idea.
So the final plan, if you need, they've got lot areas labeled, if you want that, you can say thank them about it.
Yeah, if we could, um, and then we can, you have that electronically too? Can you uh, email that to Jeff, and then maybe we can push it on to the realtors also? So they've got an idea what they're up against? Jeff, I expect there's extra copy there, Jeff, if you want a hard copy, but.
Sure.
Oh, I was naming a chap, Jason forward that on to you, and then we can push it on to, uh, the realtors anyway, so they got it electronically and.
Well, apparently someone on, online had mentioned to Joel, or that there's a Rundy Realty out of Kentset, I've, I've never heard of it, I don't know.
Yeah, she's, her office is in Mason, but they, they live outside of Kentset. Mike Romig lives in Manly, uh, his office is out of Mason City, but he lives in town. Yeah, so like I said, there's a lot of them that are
Well.
live locally anyways, you know?
So I, yeah, at this point, what I'm hearing is Julie, Megan Robb, and Chris Gordon, if you want me to reach out to other people, this would be the time to give me some, some direction and guidance.
Yeah. That's the only one that I can think of that I know, of those four. That actually live in the county. Yeah, why don't you?
I think it's a county effort, I think we should, maybe those four.
Yeah.
To be like, this is a county effort. And let those realtors, either they'll ever work in the county. Let them work amongst themselves and do it as a county, county effort.
If, if someone knows their names and or contact information, you can email it to me. I would appreciate it, cause I've.
I'll, I'll get you a Mike Romigs and, uh, Aaron Rundes.
Sounds good.
I remember it's a county effort.
Yeah, let's see, if they, if they wanna be interested or involved, we'll offer it to them, and if they don't.
It's a county effort.
Yep. They can all agree on a commission, then.
Work together.
That'd be the fairest way, I think. At least they get a chance at it.
Right.
If they don't, they don't wanna mess with it. Yeah, if they don't wanna mess with it, then that's unacceptable.
So it's always been a county effort the whole way, cause the casino and everything else off there, so I think it's a good county effort.
Okay, I'll get you that info on those two, Jeff, and then we'll just have to think about our pricing then.
So a question for Jeff, if they do go through these steps, set the prices, and they end up at the price below what they had asked, and they just, they need to redo the public hearing, then if they're gonna go down that road, or how would that look?
Well, if, if they, if the supervisors wanna entertain bids below, below minimum, then, then yes, we, we would have to redo the public hearing. There's, there's, yes, and there's costs associated with, with the public hearing, and there's time associated with it. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that it's, you know, we're a government on the, I'd rather see a price to sell than, than have people, you know, we just do the used car dealership, this is the rock bottom price, and
You know.
Make it a, make it a decent price, that's easier.
I think that's what we've kind of always been discussing on our side, is just, let's get our money back for the infrastructure, and get them on a tax base, you know? Let's get them on a tax roll.
You're not doing it to make money.
No.
Right.
No, we're doing it to make taxes, and get business here, get money.
Right.
And so if we can cover our ends, maybe that's how we'll do the lots, just this price, this price, this price. Then figure in whatever the realtors come back with, it's five percent, okay, we're at five percent above all that. This is the price, that's your tax rate, you're getting a cheap lot. We're not gonna, you know, that's, that's gonna be the price of lots. And we cover all our ends, and, and then try to get the money back in the county.
Yeah, you got the thing, but we'll work.
That's fine, then, we'll change, we'll do a public hearing for that. Somebody wants to take it all, I'll take it all. So.
I think so, we'll get our money.
Yep, exactly. Anything else, Jason? Jeff, I guess we'll, uh, we'll do our own work a little bit this week, and maybe get something figured out the next week or two to, to get this ball rolling, so.
Sounds, sounds good, I, the judicial branch is kinda reopening for business like July thirteenth. And we'll be looking at cramming four months of cases in three weeks or two weeks, and for now, so see a lot of me on the days we're doing trials, cause we're gonna be Tuesday through Thursday or Friday all day.
Question, Jeff, came up in one of the meetings I was at this week, they said, uh, one of the guys is wondering what's, what the court system's gonna be requiring for cleaning, are you, is the court system taking care of most of the cleaning? Are they requiring something for most above and beyond?
I haven't seen any.
It sounded like most of the court system was gonna be taken care of.
I haven't seen any, anything where they've either been asking for help, or, or that they've, they've set, set forth what they're looking at doing. They're not looking at doing jury trials, I think until August. August through September. So we're, these trials I'm talking about are mostly the magistrate trials.
Just curious, I just, that came up in conversation on, on meeting I was.
Yeah, I it seems to me that what we're hearing on the COVID nineteen is that it doesn't live very long on surfaces or on things, I don't know that that's a, is big a concern as, as the people itself. But, you know, this, again, out, outside of my area of expertise.
Yep.
I was just curious, thanks.
And I don't know if there's been any, any further discussion on the, um, on the parks? And I realize that, that really isn't your guys'.
Yeah.
No, that's Dan.
Like Dan and Jim, we're just kinda gonna, uh, see how it goes over the next thirty days, kind of go about a month at a time, and see what happens. So I'm sure we'll get caught up here in the next couple of weeks, again, with those guys, but.
Just procedurally for, for reopening it, it's, it would be the, uh, conservation board. It, uh, the whole, whole point in your resolution, I think you understand this, was to show support that, you know,
Yeah, that's all.
All the areas of the county are, are on one page, and, you know. The sheriff did respond.
Wait for Jim to set up a meeting on that, so. I suppose though, they probably got a board meeting coming up here soon, I think they're discussing with that. Go from there, so. Okay, is there anything else for Jeff on there?
Yes, uh, Charlie Pierce in Meltonville.
Yeah, I had, uh, sent you back a responsive email, I CC'd everyone else in, I haven't talked to Cindy Thompson about it, but that was a project that uh, our previous assessor was working on when she left, I don't think it ever got handed off to Cindy, and it's just sat by the wayside for four years. So if you wanna resurrect it, I mean, I, I kind of had already done what I needed to do.
As I said, ask Cindy to come over.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Judy come in. This all came down on Friday, and I was at the office night, cause I know nothing about it, and I think it was too much for me to do. But Judy's got the history on it, and we're sort of under the understanding that, I mean, there's nothing else we can do at this time. I'm gonna go through everything today, and get you guys emails on all the paperwork that happened for the last. But, so.
You know, I, I don't quite understand the comment, there's nothing we can do at this time, but.
Well, and once again, I've got it, this is all new to me, I mean, as far as we know, it has to be vacated, the assessor doesn't have, the assessor's office does not have that capability to vacate streets or alleys. Then new legals have to be made, and we have to then contact the landowners and let them know that. The only reason why I think it's coming out now is because Charlie Pierce wants to, um, sell some land. And the surveyor is now, how I'm understanding this, I don't know, without actually sitting down and talking to them, surveyor's not coming in all the way, because it shows that it hasn't not been vacated.
Sure.
Well, and, and let's, let's be clear. Those were dedicated by the town of, what's the name of the town?
Mountain.
Meltonville. The town of Meltonville doesn't exist. I mean, it's, it's no man's land. There is no one that has the legal authority to vacate it. This court doesn't have the legal authority to vacate it, they don't own it, they can no longer vacate this, and they can vacate my house. I mean, they, they, they don't own it, they don't have a legal interest in it. One of the things we had looked at four years ago was that the assessor has the power and authority to determine who owns a piece of property, and what the value of it is. And we were gonna go ahead and just transfer them to the, to the individual, we're gonna, gonna tax them. And no one else is claiming the property, if they wanna go through the process of doing a, uh, title clearing exercise, they certainly have the ability to do so. Otherwise, they're gonna be paying taxes on it, and eventually they're gonna have a claim to it.
So how, how did then, because this was before my time, how did it work for, um, Bristol? Now, that was platted and everything, but it had to be vacated.
Was there streets in Bristol?
Yes.
I was trying to remember.
Same in Bowlin.
Okay.
Bowlin's the same way.
So, yeah, I guess, I don't know, did like, yeah, Bruce just bought the.
I, I think it has to, and we have vacated on there, and I know for Joel even, to move those, kind of, that we need some kind of paperwork that says those are vacated, am I correct?
Correct.
So how do we get to two offices or three offices, all the work to get it done?
Well, and the assessor side, we're, and I know we've got emails back then too, um, abstract office was on the same page, and so was recorder's office. That we don't have that legal right from an assessor side to move those boundaries without a legal document.
Did you guys reach out to the others? I mean, this has probably happened.
Yeah, I wasn't even.
Well, see, well, years ago, Joey might have, I don't know. Um, we don't have any emails from anybody, but, you know.
To start that conversation. Just to see.
I suppose, and the only reason why it came up was when we found all these vacated, or not vacated, um, was when we went to farms, and all of this stuff that was being farmed or whatever did not have ownership name on it. And that's how this whole thing way, way years ago started. So.
But I thought we'd give some of that land back, the whole size is, he got, he was.
No, he just, he's just farming.
He's farming it, he's not being taxed.
He's not being taxed. So that never got processed either?
Well, that was part of all the same, same thing.
Yeah, because we can't, there's nothing telling it, you have to have a legal document to change boundaries.
I'm, I'm of the opinion that, that the assessor has more authority to act than the supervisors. At the same time, if it makes them feel better, and you guys wanna do a vacation of Meltonville streets and alleys, I'm fine by it, we could certainly do the paperwork, you don't have the legal authority to do it. But by doing it, there will then be paperwork saying it's been vacated. There is no one that's inhibiting it or inhabiting it. The people that are using it are the same ones we're looking at assessing for taxes. I, I, I don't think there's gonna be any great harm, I don't know that we're necessarily gonna get sued by anyone. But it's, it's a step that I don't think is necessary, but if, if it provides the cover that Cindy's office needs, then that's, that's fine by me.
So what, who's been cleaning all that up up there then over the years, who's been taking care of that?
Neighboring the property owners, neighborage property owners.
Cause I mean, there's still a road that goes through by the ninety degree, right?
But, right. But that is not even, um, according to secondary roads, that is not even a, an actual road anymore.
And we've got roads in the county that aren't actual roads that, that the county still, still flowers and takes care of. And, and, um, you know, we, we want to be careful that we don't open a can of worms and.
You wouldn't need new legals to.
Well, we would just include in the legals, the vacated street or alley, wherever it happens to be. We would include that in the legal document. But to move the property line, you, you've got to have something to tell us to do that.
But there was a, there were spreadsheets that, uh, had been prepared that had listed all of these little.
I'll have. Are they in that folder? Cause we have the whole folder of all of that.
So we search into it.
Yeah, I.
And then, uh.
And then there's also two, like you said earlier, there are two parcels out there that the county actually owns.
Yeah.
Really?
No, and then
Yeah.
We, we were getting sell those or transfer those at the same time, but.
Okay. How many acres are we going to?
We're talking square feet.
Square feet.
Right.
You know, the county conservation, I think more. Okay.
Put some new floor out.
You really do want to downsize. That might work. Okay.
And we just need confidence on this.
Oh, go ahead and research it.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause this all came up Friday. I'm not sure we called and, or really late Thursday.
Yeah. They called me. Yeah. Everybody wants it done yesterday, not today.
Right. And then he had called secondary roads and if.
Somehow we can get the assessor, the attorney and board here to get it done.
We should be able to.
Okay, let's get it done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. That it for Jeff now? We get anything else?
Yeah. It was before my time.
Yeah, we do. I have a loop on that one. Good. Thanks. Uh, take a motion to.
You got the answer?
Do you have a question?
I was just going to, you guys were talking about Meltonville and I speak your microphone all jacked. So.
All right.
Well, and you guys were talking about it and we had that question come up here the other day again. Oh, the right way. I don't remember who brought it up.
Charlie Pierce.
Okay. And then one of our biggest issues that we have is specifically in the winter time. And we're plowing snow and there's this dedicated right of way in front of a certain landowner's place. We end up pushing snow through the intersection to the field. And then every spring we get a phone call because we gouged up the road or like the drive, whatever. And there's already a building located within that right of way anyway, or it's in being encroached already. Um, I mean, for snow removal, it's great for us to drive through there, but then we're expected to maintain a portion that only one individual uses. Other than when we push snow across in the winter time. So, I mean, there's other spots in the county that have right of way issues similar to that. But it'd be nice for me to get some of that cleaned up a little bit. Sure. Just.
Where is that? Some Zinnia, isn't it just on Zinnia?
Yeah, Zinnia, yeah. Four, five forty fifth.
Or, yeah.
You said we're triangles, right? There were.
Yes, it did. I think it was an elevator there.
Four seventy if it goes right into Meltonville.
So on that penny road comes down, makes a, I guess I'm going from Zinnia going west and down. There's a right of way shown through there that goes, continues to go through to the field. And I guess in the past we plowed it. The individual lives there, uses that to get in and out of his garage and parks there too. So it's almost like it's a granular driveway slash road slash push snow through it. I mean, he expects us to plow it so that he can get out of his house. Because there's right of way there. Now, whether it's not, whether it's a legal right of way or not, I guess.
I don't know.
I don't know. But we've always maintained it as such, at least in the winter time.
Yeah. Well, and, and the short answer is it's easier to spend two minutes pushing the snow through there than it is to try and.
Well, we just get the complaints in the spring that it's all rutted up and then everything else. Well, depending on winter, yeah, it's going to get rutted and we're trying to maintain it. So then we spend extra time, money to go out there and rock it and.
Well, I, I've seen some of your emails where you let people know. Oh, shit. So, you know, that's.
We, we try to be polite about things and try to work with people, but sometimes we go more, we extend the, the straw too far.
So, you know, I, I think you can tell them, hey, you know, take care of it. There's, you have.
I mean, it is nice for our trucks to drive straight through and.
Put you a bill for snow, snow removal. And if they want to push the issue, then they can pay for the, uh, court, uh,
Yeah.
Court costs. I mean, that's, that's where all this gets expensive. And, you know, we went through it with the, with the brewery situation where, you know, we cleaned up, cleaned up the road and, yeah, what cost was about five, six thousand dollars. Um, it, it certainly does nothing for the rest of it. If the neighbors had, had just hired an attorney and gotten together and they could have gotten the whole property cleaned up. But they don't want to spend the money.
Right.
And, you know, I, I, I get nervous when we're doing the things that just encourage people to have or spend money.
Well, assuming we can do a little more digging, I guess, and let's try to get it figured out.
Sounds good.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
You too.
Oh, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, I.
All right.
Close me as adjourned.